There is, you know, you guys.
Noah.
I know you don't want to.
Oh, Noah.
Um, probably, I would have loved to know that before. I bought two homes on that street.
Oh, yeah.
You know, um, somebody was looking at the law.
Did you get a contractor lined up?
In five lines, okay, we're out of here. People don't want it. I mean, they're not even buying a lot. Someone bought a lot and found out their sign. Um, and it's just, it's a cute neighborhood, but you moved to Rexburg.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's a fucking lovely neighborhood.
Yeah, you need your nose so that you can schedule.
It's a business neighborhood, it's a business, it's just a travel.
Yeah.
I really hope not.
No, she's saying she needs more than a week.
I, that's not my favorite, but I think it's, I'm not going to choke on it too much.
Get the dumpster out.
Get the dumpster out. We can't put all the driveway till the streets done.
They usually schedule this out. They should give you at least that timeframe.
I think so. Oh, okay. Yeah, it's just.
Well, I, I think part of that problem is, is.
Come up and they visit us.
You know, it's, it's always the contractor's dilemma, you know, they say, oh, you know, we'll be there in four weeks. And then, of course, they don't make it till six weeks.
That'd be sad. It would just be sad for, you know, we have that really kind of the feel of Rexburg. We've got some neighborhoods, we've got all the ones on the.
Oh, yeah.
East side of college, you know, um.
Yeah, yeah, that wouldn't be good.
Whatever, Tarracotta and all those. They don't have big roads going through.
Okay.
And it's really sweet.
Thanks, Kristen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell Bill hello.
Okay. Is it six thirty? Yep. Oh, it is six thirty. All right, let's get going here. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We appreciate, appreciate the attendance. We finished up a previous meeting and one thing that I would like to mention, I don't know, most of you actually were here for the previous meeting. So I, I talked about our junior high orchestra performing at Carnegie Hall in New York, which was an awesome experience, I hear. And we also, you'll be hearing more about this, we've got our tabernacle legacy committee as a meeting and trying to put together a, a campaign to raise the money that we need to basically save the tabernacle if things are starting to fall apart. And we, we need to rally as a community and save that building, of course, being our most historical building that we have. So we're going to be working on that for the next couple of years. All right, at this point in time, uh, we would like to go ahead and start our meeting with a word of prayer and a pledge to, pledge to the flag. And let's see, it's my turn to say the prayer. And Councilmember Walker, would you lead us in the pledge after that? All right, thank you. Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity to meet together here tonight. We're grateful for this Rexburg community and all of the wonderful people that live here and the opportunity that we have to, work together and do all of the things that we have the opportunity to do here. We're grateful for our stewardship, uh, to make decisions for the community. And we ask you to bless us with the wisdom that we need to be able to make good decisions and to do the things that are best for the community. We're grateful again for all that we have and these things we pray in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Would you, anything still right, please rise, join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, let's go ahead with the roll call of the council members, please. Arianna.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Pete Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Pete Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Council President Walker.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. We have a full council tonight, so that's great. All right, uh, we will go ahead at this time, we have a time for comments of things that are not on the agenda for tonight. We invite anyone who'd like to make a comment to come up to the podium and state your name and address. And, uh, we have time for that right now. Is there anyone that would like to go ahead and make a comment at this time? Yes, sir.
My name's Michael Malcolm with Yescow. I'm located at nine four four nine West Caribou Road in Pocatello, Idaho. I appreciate the time. I talked with Mayor Merrill earlier regarding to the sign code that's currently in place. And I wanted to just look at an opportunity to make some adjustments to that sign code that would allow for improvements to existing billboard signage, not trying to, add more billboards into the community, but just simply to, to consider the ability to, keep the signs that are in place and, and be able to upgrade or improve the structures as needed. I was talking with the little gal from the chamber indicating that the chamber owns a sign that was gifted to them. It's a billboard sign that needs some maintenance and repair. They're not in the sign industry and they, they, we were discussing and, you know, they, they were looking to see what they could do to make some repairs to that sign. We would like the billboards to look nice as people are coming into the community, rather than to allow them to disappear over time. And so hopefully we've got some time, maybe in the mayor's minutes, and I can present a little bit of something. But we're simply looking at, at making adjustment to that sign code that would allow to keep billboards in the community, not to add to it, but to simply keep the ones that are existing in place, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so do you have more detailed information that you'd like to present during the mayor's business?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right, is there anyone else? Is there anyone online that has raised their hand?
No mayors.
No? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, seeing none, then we will move on to item number five, which was supposedly a presentation by Mr. David Taylor, but I do not see him here. So we'll skip that for now, and if he, if he's able to make it later, we'll move that to a later time on the agenda. All right, items, number, item number six is items from the council. These are our committee reports. Let's, let's just go down the line. Councilmember Reese, anything to report from your committees?
No, I think the major thing that we learned about is particularly in my responsibilities with liaison with the police is we had a good talk about, with them last Wednesday when we went on our, um, drive around. And it was good to, to be formally introduced to some, as a new council member, to be formally introduced to some of the leaders in our police department and hear some of their activities and concerns and suggestions. It was a, it was a very, very good opportunity for me to kind of get up to speed, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and that's certainly something that we will be looking at more in the future, so thank you. Councilmember Erickson.
I think another agenda item down the line is going to be a lot more, a lot better report than I, I can give. The Parks and Rec have been very busy. This is a busy time of the year for them as they're spooling up for the summer season. There's, there's the continuing discussion with the new Riverside Park, it's in the design phase. But, but there's some, some, some activity there that'll, that'll move forward with some construction. The, and I think we'll get a little bit better report from the, from Parks and Rec that they're putting on the, on the agenda.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, and I will mention, you know, about parks, you may have, some of you may have gotten calls about why are the restrooms not open in the parks. Nature Park and specifically, there, there was a broken valve that, that has to turn the water on to the restroom that they've been, um, trying to get to, to fix it. So we did have a porta potty delivered over there, so there is a facility, but I think they'll have that fixed pretty quick. But they've been trying to get all of the ball field stuff done because they promised, uh, the, the baseball people that we would have the fields ready for Monday, so they were focusing on those for a while. And now I think they've got that pretty well done. So anyway, moving on, Councilmember Chambers.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Madison Economic Partners continue to meet. In addition to the economic gardening that we're working on, we are in the process of reviewing the bylaws for the organization and potentially looking at expanding the group. Cultural arts, I think you gave a good update on the museum and the, I don't know if you've driven by, but have you seen how the color has changed on that entire facade? It's really, it's really, or I'm sorry, tabernacle.
Yeah.
Tabernacle. But speaking of the museum, we are looking for an alternate location for that museum to go. So if you have ideas, they would be welcome. Urban renewal, you know, I thought, we've talked about this downtown project that the city and urban renewal is working on with the contractors. At some point, it would be really interesting, I think, especially as the plans get developed and the design concepts start coming in, if we scheduled a time with the contractor in this meeting or in a city council meeting and let them present what they have planned in the three blocks that are designed for redevelopment. I think the public would find that really interesting. So that would probably be, be late summer, early fall, but I'd like to see us do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Presentation, we'll put that in our notes. Okay, Council President Walker.
Mayor's Youth Advisory Board met two weeks ago and toured the jail. It was kind of neat because they got to go into part of the jail where the women's facility used to be, which isn't open anymore. So they were able to go right back into the cells and see what it's like, I think, open some of their eyes, hopefully. And then tomorrow they're going to go tour the fire department. They're going to have their closing social in two weeks. So they're about ready to, to call it quits for the school year.
Well, they've done a good job for us. We appreciate that. All right.
Well, then they got Flower Day coming up that they're gonna.
Oh, yeah.
In charge of. They'll be there to do flowers for that.
Yeah, in fact, that's May sixteenth, and it's a Thursday. We scheduled that on, instead of on the city council day, we scheduled it for Thursday. So if you can put that on your schedule to come help any of you and any of you, if you'd like to help beautify the downtown and plant some flowers and stuff, that's a, a service project. It's a great thing to have your family involved. And we, we routinely get quite a few families that come and help us do that, and it's a lot of fun. So, all right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
I just have, um, for, as far as beautification goes, on May thirteenth, from five to seven PM, we'll have an Eagle Park cleanup. So we're just going to meet at the pavilion and do what we've done in previous years, where we try to clear up the garbage and the, um, other things that need a little bit of cleaning up at, at that park. And then I just wanted to say I've had a few groups contact me lately looking for service projects. And so I just, I think our community is really awesome that they're all looking for service. And it's fun to try to come up with new ideas of, of what we can have them do so that they can have a service project. So I just think our community is wonderful, so.
That is awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Erickson.
Everybody here should have been, received a letter from the school board inviting them to do the graduation on May twenty-third. Hopefully you need to respond back by April twenty-sixth and see if you're coming or not. And then if you are, then we need to be in our seats by five forty-five. There'll be at six, six o'clock, their graduation at the I Center. Also, um, there'll be a dare graduation on April twenty-fourth at six thirty at the high school, if you want to attend, uh, for the dare graduation. That's from the school board. Also, um, from airport board, I have nothing from the airport board, on the golf board. Starting out a very busy year. It's starting out really good, except today it starts snowing again. But the golf season started out good and our facilities are being used and enjoyed, so it's going good.
Great, all right, thank you.
Can I ask a question about?
Yeah.
So the dare graduation, did you say that's April twenty-fourth?
April twenty.
That's right.
Fourth, yeah.
And are we supposed to RSVP or anything or?
No, you just show up there.
Yeah, there, there were some invitations. I don't know if they mailed any of those out or if they're in the box.
Email came today, so I don't know if they're.
Oh, that's why, yeah, I just saw mine today, so they must have just stuck it in there. Okay.
I just want to remind.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm glad you did. Glad you did, because sometimes that's easy to forget. Okay, I will mention one other item, another service opportunity, and it's, it's been really awesome and we appreciate everybody that helps us. But on May the twenty-seventh, which is a Saturday, uh, we're going to have a highway cleanup, which is cleaning up Highway twenty and a lot of the, the highways coming into town. They, they get really. Actually, somebody went out and actually did some cleanup out on Highway twenty from the, from the Highway thirty-three exit down, a couple of weeks ago, which it looks a ton better, but unfortunately there's already some more garbage out there, so it'll need to be done again. But it always looks so much better when that's done, and it makes our community look so much better.
You said May, but it's April, right, that one?
Uh, yes, 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 sorry. Oh, thank you. Yeah, May twenty-seventh, that would be way too late, yeah. I was still in May mode there. April twenty-seventh, thank you for that correction. Okay, April twenty-seventh. Okay. All right, at this point in time, we have our staff reports, and we'd like to start out with our finance report with our CFO, Mr. Matt Nielsen.
All right, good evening. Um, so just a quick update, uh, trying to put the budget together. We'll have those meetings in a few weeks that start the department meetings. And then, of course, thank you to all those that came yesterday to the audit meeting. That was accepted by the council so we could move forward to fiscal year twenty-four completely. So on the reports tonight, um, so the cash and investments, I'll just show you that one real quick. There's just a couple of things on this that are, that we're looking at strategy-wise on our investing and, and whatnot. And we are going to move a couple million more into this Morton assets this month, so we should see that next month. And that's just part of our laddering approach. But really, I kind of mentioned this every month, but as you kind of look at what we've invested, we're in that zero to two years, really about eighty percent of our portfolio. But we are, our strategy is to start to push that closer to that three-plus year because we, we believe that we'll see rates to start to drop. And so we're just trying to maximize the, the awesome returns that we've really been seeing the last few years. And so, so that's, that's the cash and investments. And then on the other report, let's see, I can grab it here. Just the treasures report. We'll make that a little bigger. No, I don't see. Sorry. I always forget to look there. Thank you. So on this one, as I went through this, uh, just, this is halfway through the fiscal year, so, so as you look at those percentages spent, fifty percent is kind of the target. And so as I look through, obviously some of them are going to be a little higher if we've hit some capital items. But the only things that I would probably say is, as you look at some of the negatives, emergency services, that one should, we just actually got a big receipt from Fire District that should help on that, and then we're going to do our quarterly billings in the next few weeks. And then as you go down, you know, there's a pretty big balance in the street repair construction. So as, hopefully we'll get that LID bid back soon and, and see what, what will happen with that. But we expect to use several million there. And then as you go into the, um, the last page here, just a couple of things that I'll just note real quick. You can actually see that on the LID construction, you know, we've already spent over a million this year so far. And that was really just closing out last year's LID. And so then we'll ramp up and get the new one coming. And then the only other one that kind of sticks out is that seven hundred and thirty-two percent for the entrepreneurial programs. That's because of a grant pass-through that we sponsored, cosponsored. We just need to do a budget adjustment to reflect the revenue. So it's basically, it gets spent and the revenue comes right back in. So we're at a total of about twenty-eight percent. So in other words, we've spent about twenty-three million of our eighty-two million dollar budget. But you will start to see, particularly the capital expense really ramp up over the next few months, so. Any questions on that? Yes.
What kind of, what kind of return are we getting on our investments?
Investments? Um, you know, all of our reinvestments have pretty much averaged over five percent. And so even, even as you look at our, our real liquid investments, stuff that we can get within a few days, we're at like five point three percent on that. Not on our bank account. We don't make anything on like our checking account. But we try to move that into the LGIP, which is the state invested pool, and that's like five point three four percent. And there's a, if you go back to that report, there's a lot in there, purposely, right, to get that bigger yield, so.
Yeah, we're trying to make our money work for us as, as well as we can. One of the things I would point out for those who are here, and you probably have heard this before if you've been to previous meetings, but, uh, as you look at that budget, there's, there's quite a few millions stored here and there and the other. But as soon as we do a wastewater treatment plant project or something like that, you know, you have eight or ten or twelve million dollars goes out the door really quick. And so even, so we try to save up this money and get it accumulated so that we can do those projects that need to be done without having to try to raise, to float a bond. You know, we don't want to have you to say, yes, we want to vote to raise our taxes some more and to be able to pay for this treatment plant. We actually try to save up, you know, and try to live within our budget and then do it as we have money available. And so that's why you see quite a, quite a bit of money there stored on the balance sheet so that we have the money to take care of it when the time comes. So thank you for your wise stewardship on that, Matt.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry, did anyone else have any questions for Matt before I let him go? All right. All right, Public Works, Mr. Keith Davidson, Public Works Director. We have item number one is an agreement approval for Keller Associates to design, sorry, design the railroad pathway between Riverside Park and North Yellowstone Highway. And this agreement is being funded through a transportation alternatives program, otherwise known as the TAP grant from the local highway technical assistance council. Want to tell us a little bit more about that, Keith?
Yeah, so this is just that section along the railroad tracks, kind of behind Fat Cat, behind Desert Industries. So it'd be that section of pathway going along the railroad tracks is what we're looking at. And so we have Keller, um, on board to do the design work for that. So we're just seeking council approval to enter into that contract.
Okay, any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Do you know the timeline for that, or we aren't that far into it?
No, we're not quite that far into it. I mean, the, I want to say the money, I can't remember if it's twenty-five or twenty-six. These TAP grants generally are several years out when we get the funding, then we get the design. So I think the design work, we begin, and then we look at twenty-five or twenty-six for construction on it, so.
This goes from the, um, from the river, basically.
Yeah, so the existing pathway.
Where does it connect to?
Going, going all the way north up to Seventh, north, up there, and so. So then we'll connect in and, and then over to the sidewalks. And then the, then that way it can continue on up along the old Yellowstone Highway, along there, so.
Keith.
Uh-huh.
Is that a typo on the overhead rate, that percentage, or is that right?
No, that's, that's correct when they look at all their, all their costs involved with it, so.
Okay, on a smaller project, probably, yeah. Okay. All right, any further questions or comments on this item? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve this agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council President Walker. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We will move on to item number two, which is a bid approval for Local Improvement District Fifty-three.
Yeah, so we had two bidders on this. We had Edstrom Construction and HCA Contractors. The two bids came in fairly close when you're looking at the dollar figures, but we're recommending award to Edstrom Construction for the two million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, hundred dollars.
Yeah, those look good bids, and they're a little bit below estimate, which is nice, too. That's good. Okay, is there any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to, to approve this bid.
I'll make that motion to approve this bid to Edstrom Construction.
Okay, thank you for the amount shown. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, item three is the Parks Status Report. You want to go ahead with that item, item?
Yeah, so what I thought we'd do is we'd just bring up some of the, the design of the, the park, the new park that's going to go up by the south fork of the Teton River. That way the council gets to take a look at it, kind of see how the design layout is going and, and some of the thought process that went through it. And so, um, here's, do I have a pointer? I've got the mouse. I can point with the mouse. So here's the bridge that, that we put in along Barney Dairy Road, um, last year. And so the idea was to, to create a parking lot along this section with some different pathways that connect. This is our existing pedestrian bridge and then the existing pathway that, that runs north and south behind these businesses. And then some of the things that we were looking at, obviously, um, we're looking at a pavilion, kind of a larger pavilion like we have in some of the other parks along there. And then creating kind of an open area here with different lights along the pathway that would also allow, if we ever wanted to have events in the park where we had vendors needing to plug in and use electricity along there. And then we had kind of a little overlook of the river. And then up to the north here is where we'd have the access point where people could come down to the river. We also have a little access point here if people were floating the river when there's water in it, that they could get out along this section. And then this area would kind of have some kind of rock retaining walls with a pathway that went down to the river. And then the, the sandy area would be back behind here. This would just be your typical river gravels down there. Working with IDWR and the Corps of Engineers, they don't like to see sand imported down into the river, but natural gravel that's there. And so the idea was to create a sandy area up here with small shade pavilions in that, that sandy area where people, kids and families could get together along that section. And then this section right here, we, we were looking at some bouldering, some climbing features, as well as a restroom over here, and then you have the volleyball, sand volleyball courts, here, two of those, there. And so that kind of, in a nutshell, is what, as you look at the park, let me see if, was there, can't remember if this one had. So that's a little bit more with the landscaping with trees in there. You can see that, kind of how they would lay out the landscaping plan, um, with the river. And then just, just part of the construction drawing set that would be put together for, so is there any questions on the park?
Questions from anyone about this? Yes, go ahead.
Do you have pictures of what the bouldering, like, would look like, the actual pieces of bouldering equipment you're gonna?
I don't have them here with me, but we do have some concepts, and I'm happy to send those out to the, to the council.
Awesome.
I can do that tomorrow. Uh, they do have some renderings that I don't have as well, and I can get those and send those out. Just some conceptual renderings of kind of what the, the park will look like, and they do have those, those bouldering features in there.
So are those bouldering features man-made features, that you're not going to bring in a massive?
Yes, yes. Yeah, man-made features that allow for climbing on those, and so.
All right, any further questions?
Keith.
Yes.
I know we've discussed this, but this park is designed mainly for teens and up, kind of, right?
Yeah, yeah, the, the idea was because we have the canal running there, we have the river running there, would be more of an older, like teens and, and older. Not, not to say that, you know, little kids, but obviously, um, in those parks, right, when you have water features, you definitely have to be a lot more aware of what your, your children are doing.
And, you know, over the past few years, we've designed Park Street Park and Nature Park to be more of a younger kids parks, you know, emphasis. And so this would be a little bit, and there was a lot of discussion that there's really not a lot of stuff for teenagers, tweens and teens to do. And so that's kind of the emphasis of these, of this park, yeah.
So the question is, is there any allowance at all for, uh, for, for something for small kids? kids?
There always can be options, right? So if there is, but we, you'd probably want to look at it in a different light, whether, you know, something like Nature Park, there is that canal, we do have that play feature that went in and we put a fence around that section there. I mean, it's, it's still open, so those would probably be things, if you're looking at small kids where you might, might have some of those things. I mean, not to say that, obviously, the sandy area, you know, small kids generally like playing in, in the sandy area as well. But, but that's always a concern is how, how much fencing do we put in and how does that, how does that look?
So, we are, we are open at some point that if there's a demand for, for some sort of a feature for young children?
Yeah, I think, I think there's always open to the conversation and looking at it and saying, okay, you know, what, what makes the most, most sense with that?
Okay. Any further, yes?
Or didn't we talk about if there was a demand, we could put it more towards the baseball quad?
Yeah, yeah, so there's, there's different options. I mean, obviously around that area is to look and say, you know, maybe, I mean, it's a, it's a close proximity and maybe it would be better suited over by the baseball quad.
Okay, so then we, we'll send this out to bid for this summer, is this?
Yeah, the, the plan is, so the, the hope is that they'll have this next week, have all the contract documents and stuff put together so we could go out to bid on it.
Awesome.
And try to get going on it, yeah. Okay, any further questions? All right, thank you, Keith, appreciate that. All right. All right, let's move on to item number nine, which is our items to consider tonight. Item A is our planning and zoning recommendation to approve the comprehensive plan map amendment from intermediate residential to commercial at 1040 West Main Street. This would be designated as resolution 2024-04 if the motion passes. Got Mr. Kyle Baldwin here and from our planning and zoning department. So, yeah, Kyle, go ahead and tell us about this, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and City Council. This first one is for the comp plan change, as you mentioned. This is for a 10-acre piece. It's just north of Main Street and situated just west of Highway 20. He's asking to take it from the designation of intermediate residential to the designation of commercial in that area. Currently, it's, it's being used as a agricultural, it's just a field right now. I know he has been working with neighboring properties as far as access goes, I don't know what point that's at, but he has been working towards that. At this point, if you have any questions for me?
Any questions about this item for Kyle? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2024-04, this recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt, or that we, I guess, adopt resolution number 24, 2024-04.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reeser. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. Actually, thank you, Councilmember Chambers. I realized that I skipped item number eight, which we had Mr. Michael Malcolm here to make a little bit. So Kyle, do you mind if we?
Not at all.
Let him come in here before we move on to your next item and?
Did you see this?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have Dave come up a little later. Mr. Taylor, I should say, sorry.
Michael Malcolm, 9449 West Caribou Road, Pocatello, Idaho, with Yescow, mayor and council members. The, the intent of my being here this evening would be to just kind of identify the sign code as it's currently in place. Currently, the sign code indicates that no off-premise advertising such as a billboard is allowed in the city. And I'm okay with that wording as it's, is indicated at this point. My concern, however, is that existing signs that are currently in place, if they are in fact needing to be restructured or rebuilt in any way, or if they need to be relocated for any purpose, because of the way that the code is currently written, would not allow for that. So over time, you'd have billboards, in a sense, I guess retire, expire and disappear. And if that's the intent of what you were hoping to achieve, I guess the code is written in a way that that would allow for that. But I wanted to just kind of touch base on just a couple of items. First and foremost, the city of Rexburg has a nice, beautiful, digital off-premise sign that sits at the intersection on Second. And it's a, it's a great way and tool to communicate to the city and the public. I don't feel like it's a distraction, I think you guys did a tasteful way in being able to provide an off-premise sign that gets a message out to the general public in a way that you can communicate the, the events and the different things that are happening. I know that's a partnership with the, the hospital or the medical facility here in town, and it, and it provides a good service. As with various other billboards, they also provide a service. Many of the local businesses utilize those in, in helping to promote their businesses and services that they offer. There are communities throughout the United States right now that are recognizing the way that technology is now, that they would like to rewrite their, their sign codes and sign notices. It's happening across the nation where numerous cities are now realizing the benefit that that has. You guys have adopted it and have it right now, and they're finding that they would like to upgrade their, their signs in ways to doing that. And so they're, they're changing their code to allow for, not necessarily new billboards, but adjusting the existing structures that are in, in the communities right now. What I'm looking at is, is that if that sign that you currently have were to be hit or damaged due to a car accident or something like that, wait, the code's written, you're unable to rebuild that structure. If you did, you would be going against the, the code as it's currently written because they're not allowed. And so.
It is on city property, though.
The, the sign sits on city.
Our sign is on city property.
Okay.
So, we own, I mean, a business can put a sign on their property, right?
Yeah.
That one is a little different, but.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about if the billboard is on, in the right of way?
Well, and, and I think what he's saying is it's, it's, it sits on city property, so it's an on-premise sign and then imposed to an off-premise sign.
Yeah.
I guess the, the, the intent that I, I'd like to just consider is if there's an opportunity for a sign to be improved or structurally sound, I mean, there's a, there's a sign out on U.S. Highway 20, it's a wooden structure, a, a good strong wind could knock that sign over, and then that, that sign owner would not have the ability to rebuild that structure and make it look nicer. Or there's other sign structures that have I-beam structures. We currently have one that we would like to improve, and I'd sent over a photo to the mayor, I don't know if there's a way to pull that up there, and I, I could, I've got it here, but I, I thought if there's a way to show you this, the, the comparison, we're not looking at changing the height, the size, or anything else, we just simply want to restructure that sign so that it has a monopole structure with a strong embedment located in the northernmost part of the, of the property line. After there's some surveys and things that were performed, we, we'd identified that the property lines are actually different than what it was originally thought to have been when that sign was first put, put in that location. We simply want to just have the opportunity, whether we can go through a sign variance or a sign exception process, to rebuild an existing sign that looks a little bit, just, it looks better aesthetically as you're coming in to welcome those businesses or those travelers coming into the community, to have a more aesthetically pleasing billboard sign that's not on a old I-beam structure. And so, from a standpoint of maintenance and improving the overall aesthetics of the sign, we'd like to figure out a way in which we could be able, be able to do that and still keep our signs. Again, I'm not trying to add more billboards into the community, but if we can at least maintain what we currently have. There's other communities within the state of Idaho, Boise and Nampa both have what's called a cap and replace, meaning that if the sign had to come down for any reason, you would issue a demolition permit to the city. Once they receive that demolition permit, they would then have a credit to build a new sign with that, with that credit, with the sign being down, and then credit it to be reinstalled at a later date or at a, at a different location if, if necessary. So, there, there's other cities that have implemented this by not allowing new signs to come in, but still maintaining the signs that are currently in place. And so I'd, I'd like the city council and the, and for each of you to maybe consider seeing what can be done, again, whether that's a matter of going through a sign variance or exception process to allow for that to happen based on the hardships, or changing the code in a way that would allow for other businesses and individuals. I did reference the Chamber, again, similar situation. They're not in the sign business. The Chamber utilizes a nice sign that says, "Come experience Rexburg" as you're coming in, taking that first exit by Applebee's. But if something were to happen to that sign that come down, they would not have that opportunity to, to put that sign back up based again, the way that the code is written. And so, if there's a, again, a process that we can go through, I'm happy to help in writing the code or adjusting that to make the, any changes as necessary. We've, we've helped other businesses with Yescow being around for the last 104 years. We've, we've helped many cities in helping them with writing sign code that's favorable to the city in a win-win situation and allowing for signs to be placed in, in places of commerce. Is there any questions that you might have for, for me?
Any questions for Mr. Malcolm? Anyone? I will just say that I have talked with Alan Parkinson, our planning and zoning administrator, and, and I in fact talked today, and we're, he's planning on bringing it up in one of our strategic team meetings to talk about it and see if we want to consider it in, in the upcoming, the next upcoming planning and zoning meeting, which is the first Thursday in May.
Yeah, and, and again, it, it might not necessarily require an actual code change. If you guys have within your code an allowance for a sign exception or a sign variance that would be kind of a one-off, that's just, hey, in, under these hardships, we would consider doing something like that, so that it doesn't necessarily have to change the entire code. I know how difficult that is, I know the process that, that, that undertaking is. So, if there's other options, I just want to see what we can do to be able to, to improve a sign structure, and that, that's all.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Malcolm? Did I ask that already? Okay, well, we will actually bring that up in our meeting, probably on Monday then, and talk about that and see if, if there's any variances or things that we want to change there and we'll, and we'll talk, yes, Mr. Zonger?
It might be beneficial to get a timeline from Mr. Malcolm relative to the one sign that he's discussing because there is no quick fix, it is an ordinance change.
Okay. Timeline, are you, if you get time constraints?
Trying to get it all over within the next six days.
So, it, it's not necessarily a major safety concern in this point, but we would like to act sooner than, it, it is in conjunction with the property that's being developed by David Taylor.
Yeah. It, it was, when it was adopted 15 years ago, it was written in a way to sunset billboards, which goes against what may be the sentiment now. So if we want to change it, we'll, we'll take a, an amendment to our existing ordinance.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Okay, all right, yeah, and let us know, you know, about any, any other things that, you know, time constraints and things like that they have so that we can try to work with them as best we can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, and Mr. Taylor, is it all right? Is it, can you stick around for about four more items here and, okay, all right, thank you. All right, let's, let's move on with item B then, on our planning and zoning recommendation to approve the rezone at 1040 West Main Street. This is basically the same property, right, from mixed use to community business center. This is designated as ordinance number 1313 if the motion passes. Is there any, Kyle, is there any, anything else besides what we already talked about on this?
I think you pretty much, pretty well said it.
Okay.
Just now.
Is there any questions from council on this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to, yes?
Does this get any time sensitivity? Does it need to be, the rules?
Requested.
Rules suspended?
Should we waive the rules or?
Suspend the rules?
I was not made aware of any, but were you?
Treat it as a first reading.
This is normal then?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they need it expedited, we'll do it.
All right, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I shall, shall move that we adopt ordinance number 1313 and consider it first read.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Calvin Erickson, sorry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. We'll move on to item number C, which is the planning and zoning recommendation to approve the comprehensive plan map amendment from intermediate residential and commercial mixed use to high residential at 52 North Third West. This would be designated as resolution number 2024-05 if the motion passes. Kyle, tell us more about this item, please.
So this one is situated over, it's just west of BMC West, or it's Builders First Source now, I apologize. And it's just north of Wolf Lighting where the, the new food court is. What they've asked for here is a, and you probably already know this, but it's a, it's a comprehensive plan designation change from intermediate residential and commercial to high residential. My understanding is there's a couple property owners that came in with the Sorenson team on this to have this comp plan change made. The main part of this is currently vacant, and I believe it's been vacant for years, if not forever.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
I think there were a lot of questions answered in planning and zoning, I know they've recommended it for approval as well, so if you have any questions for me.
Any questions about this property or item?
As I, as I understand, there was, there was no testimony against this, no, no property owners had any issues or concerns with this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I have to say that I appreciated that the applicant went out and went door to door and approached the ones in, in that neighborhood and tried to talk to them.
Yes.
That was, to me, that's above and beyond, I thought it was really good for him to reach out and try to do that.
I agree, and he's, he's sitting here today, so, thank you.
Great, yeah, that's awesome. All right, then, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to approve this item, resolution 2024-05.
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve resolution number 2024-05.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item number D is the same property again, just as a rezone from low-density residential two to, and mixed use to high-density residential one. This item would be designated as ordinance 1113, or, excuse me, 1314. Is there any questions or comments about this since it's the same thing? I'm assuming none?
I did have just one, so it was just a really small piece that was the LDR2, right?
Yes, yeah, if I remember correctly, and, and Mr. Sorenson can probably correct me if I'm wrong.
Up on that north piece, yeah.
That one.
Okay, all right. Any?
The house on the, on the west side?
Right over here.
To the left, right there.
Those two cars.
Okay.
This, this is on Major One to the north across the street, and then, yeah, and it's got mixed use to the, I believe to the east and the south on this one.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve this rezone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make the motion that we approve ordinance number 1314.
Okay, thank.
Consider it first read.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reeser. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, item number E is the planning and zoning recommendation to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
I've got a conflict of interest in this next.
This item?
Item.
Okay.
So I'll have to accuse myself.
All right.
Do you want me to leave the dais? How do I do that?
Uh, no, that's fine. Just, you just, just, just don't vote.
Okay.
Okay. All right, this is item planning and, item E, planning and zoning recommendation to approve the Alpine Heights Division One plat located at approximately 501 East, Seventh South. And that is the area up just east of the temple, right? Yeah, right in there.
Between Harvest Heights and Eagle, whatever it is, right?
Yeah. Eaglewood there. Mm-hmm. Okay. So that was also a planning and zoning recommendation to approve. Is there, if there are no questions or comments about this item, I would entertain a motion to move forward on this item as well. Is there any questions?
I just want to say it's exciting to see some single-family housing.
Going in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good spot.
That's pretty exciting, so I can make that motion if everyone's ready.
I have one question before we make the motion.
Okay.
They talked to them in planning and zoning, they talked about a street that was, and I don't know which one it was, I couldn't, because they can't see this part of it. It was half, gonna be half-developed or half?
Right. So to the north of this plat, there's another subdivision, it's already been platted. You can see it right there on the map. And on the southern end of that, you can see that, that city right-of-way. I believe it's already been dedicated, is that correct?
And so are they gonna hook into this?
Right there, right, yeah.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah.
So are they gonna hook into that street right there to come out, or?
On the east side?
I don't know. That's, let's see.
They will build their half of that, they'll build the north half of their subdivision.
Yeah.
Right below where that, right where the airways now, or actually in that right-of-way. They'll build half plus a little, enough for two lanes of travel to get out on the existing right-of-way.
Yes.
They'll build that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. The thing I have a concern about, sometimes we do this and we just build half the street. I would like to see the city, even if we took it upon ourselves as a city to pay for the other half, be done, and then claw back from the property owner to the north, so it's done right. Because like I say, you go around the city, we have patchwork all over, and it's, we do, do half the street enough for two cars, and then all of a sudden, it's five years later, we build the other half and it, it just patched in, and then we have, three years later, we replacing the whole thing.
Sure.
I just want to do smart growth here as we look at this, and I don't know which is the best. I'm not an engineer, I don't look at that, but I do know we do a lot of patchwork. And as we do this, and I, they brought up planning and zoning, oh yeah, we'll build X out there for two cars and wait for the developer. Is it smart for us to look at maybe doing that so it's done right? I don't know, that's Keith's question probably.
Yeah.
And then clawing that back with the property owner, or what's the best there?
It all comes down to funding, unfortunately. Right, yes. Ideally would be, yeah, build it out, but we don't always have the funds sitting there to build out a full section and wait that. That subdivision was subdivided, how many years ago?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine?
Okay.
And it hasn't been developed since then, so.
No, eighty, sorry, eighty-nine is where it was platted.
So, so it becomes challenging in that, that regard, but definitely the funding side is always, right, as the developments occur, to say, okay, we're gonna take our street funds and go build this section of, of road that might not be used as much, but it, it is a lot nicer with riding along. And so that's, that's where the, the challenge lies, I would say, is always on the side of the road.
So this might not be the one to look at, but I just, I want to try to get away from some of the ones we see, like Seventh South right now, like Burton School. That's one that's major, that should have been looked at, probably do the whole thing to the school, because of the traffic there. So I don't have no problem with this one, I just want to look at that in the future as we move forward on some of these, because this is different than a major one to a school, so.
Yeah, it definitely is.
I'm okay with the.
Okay. Well, that's a good point.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else? Hearing none, then, go ahead, council member.
I'll make a motion to approve the Alpine Heights Division One plat.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by council member Colin Erickson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, we appreciate you. Fill in for Mr. Parkinson. All right, at this time, let's move item number B, excuse me, item number five, which is a presentation by Mr. David Taylor. We'll have him come forward at this time and go ahead with your presentation, please. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, City Councilman. I come here as an ally of the city and as a proponent of its growth and development and, and well-being. We've been well-served as our family's been here, doing business here for nearly a century now. Another four years, if we can make it. I think General Motors made it a hundred years and then they went bankrupt, didn't they, Eric? We'll try to, try to not to hold, hold to that standard. I, just in a, in a previous thing, that, we always got to be careful what we ask for because we, we might just get it. And, you know, the sign ordinance might be one of those that's ensured that Rexburg has a bunch of old dilapidated signs, that as long as they're standing, and some can stand for a long time, they end up looking pretty bad because they can't be replaced or refurbished or restored to the extent that they'd like to. And there's new technology that's certainly come about that might enhance the ability of our town to do business with one another. Anyway, enough said there. I came, I, I, since I met with you all last, and I know all of you quite well, with the exception of Brianna, and I read an article where she's hiked the Table Rock, how many times?
A hundred.
You're crazy. Some of it in the winter.
It's a good crazy, though.
You really need to get some psychological help. Doing that as a 14-year-old is tough enough, I don't know how you do that. Anyway, I asked Scott Johnson to be here, but I don't think he's here either.
Uh, Scott had a, he asked me, his son was in a track meet tonight, he wrote a letter that I have here.
Okay.
And I don't, do you want me to read that now or later?
Well, I was just gonna call him a chicken, but that's all right. He's got a good excuse. I, I had done a lot of pulling together of statistics and I, and I decided, I, I, of different areas, different places, different cities, with their water rates, their sewer rates, their impact fees, their hookup fees. And I didn't want to pull that together. You guys have a lot of that stuff already at your disposal, I didn't need to bore you with a, a bunch of statistics. I just come here as an advocate of our city and of the inevitable growth that's gonna happen. If we embrace it in a way that doesn't discourage people from wanting to be part of our community, you know, we have great advantages from our location, and that's one of our great disadvantages also. You know, we can't manufacture things in Rexburg and ship them to the population centers of the country, it's pretty tough. So we have to take our, our assets and we have to accentuate them, and our assets are natural resources that surround us. We, we live in the middle of Mecca for people who love to live outdoors and do things that are outdoorsy, whether it's hiking the Table Rock in the middle of the winter, or whether it's, you know, getting on your razor, or your, your motorcycle, or your snowmobile, or your, if you like to hike or hunt or fish. So we need to accentuate those strengths and, and we need to make sure that we have jobs for people who want to live here. It's the, it's the enterprises, it's the businesses that carry the, the brunt of the tax liability in these communities. Homes and homeowners get an exemption, they're, they're, they're taxed at a much lower rate. And so we see, we see communities like Sugar City have a very difficult time taxing or creating revenue for things like schools. And if we can invite businesses to be part of our community and that, you know, the, the taxes that they bring, the payroll that they bring, and the opportunities for employment, then, then everything good rolls off of that. I don't know that we can define what kind of businesses are gonna be coming. Rexburg is Provo incarnate. We're about 30 years behind, if you will. You know, if you want to see what a university can do for a community, you know, we don't have to imagine that very hard. That's why we're working on the airport, right, Keith? And it's why we work so hard on schools, and it's why we're working so hard on roads and infrastructure. As I approach this, I'll just give you two examples. I've, I've talked to quite a few people who've done similar operations. I think you guys called the city of Twin Falls to get an idea from the Tommy's Express down there, how, what their usage of the water was.
Right.
And, and they came up with about 1.2 million gallons a month in their usage. Eventually, it all ends up in the, in the wastewater. There's not much that evaporates, as far as I can tell. The, the thing we didn't get is what Twin Falls charged Tommy's Express to put that in down there. Now, that's one of the five best Tommy Expresses in the country. There's about 185 of them operating currently throughout the United States, and that's in the top five. We get dirty cars in Idaho, I guess. Every time the wind blows or every time the frost freezes the dust to the surface, we end up with a dirty automobile. Every time, we have a lot of farm roads, a lot of dirt roads, so it's, it's popular. And their, their demographic is very similar to ours. But I had a meeting yesterday with Don who owns the Twin Falls operation, and I says, I understand that they called and got the water usage, and he says, what'd they tell them? And I says, well, 1.2 million is what you use every month. He says, that's good to know, I didn't know for sure. And I says, what's your water bill? He told me. And I says, more importantly, what'd they charge you when you, when you went to sign up for all of your impact fees and hookup fees and, and building permit fees? And his was on the higher side, his was $82,000 to do that. When Pony Express went into Iona, not Iona, Ammon.
Ammon, yeah.
And all in, they were at $42,000 for their impact fees, hookup fees, and their water and sewer is actually quite a bit less than what Rexburg's is. What I'm suggesting to us is this may be a little bit of an aberration in terms of use of water and sewer because of the nature of the business, but there's gonna be other businesses that come, they're gonna tie into our system, and we're gonna need to figure out a way that makes it so that it's not such a barrier to entry. Just give you a fine example, if I were a young man and I'd really worked hard, first 10 or 15 years of my life, and I'd saved half a million dollars either in cash or in my wife's home equity loan, and I had $500,000 I could come up with and put together an operation like this, and I go to the bank and says, look, I got a half a million dollars, free and clear, that I can put toward this enterprise. I'd like to put up building X and operation Y. And the bank buys off on this, and then I go to get a city permit to construct, and I get the kind of fee that I got on, on this one, and I, I think other car washes have got the same thing. Let me preference this, I'm not looking for a rebate. I'm not looking for that to come back to me. I'm looking for you guys to look forward as you gain, you need to pull this committee together, and you need to look at this and say, as a young man, if I had 10% down, I might get the bank to go with me, but they're probably gonna say 20 or 25, because that's the way banks are. Well, I just gave all of my equity to the city for a permit to build this operation. I'm going into this with zero equity, the bank says no. Now, I have the luxury of not having to be in that position, but there are many businesses, and I've heard of opportunity, I've heard Scott, Ballyhoo, the things that are coming to Rexburg, the growth, the new companies that are inquiring and things that are happening, and it doesn't happen. There's not that much going on. There's some, there's some organic growth that's happening, and there's some kids that are planting theirselves here, and they've got a little technology, there's a few people, they're part of the community, they moved away, they made, did well, come back, and they're, they're making some improvements and taking some risk and buying businesses and starting new enterprises. But for the most part, we're, we're scaring a lot of people away. You know, as I said in the initial meeting with you, you folks, the mayor was not there, one side of the table was there trying to gather up businesses and have them come into, have them come into town, and the other side of the business was trying to scare them away. So I think part of the process is that we've got a unique situation here where we've got so much non-tax entity that's part of our community, that the only way we can get the university and some of the facilities that the church owns and other non-taxable entities to participate is to have these fees. And that's what, you know, you kind of made one, one rule that fits none, but it helped to accommodate that. A university puts a big burden on our city, yet doesn't participate in any, any of its tax revenue. And I get that. It's, it's, it's something that we, we value, we like, but we've got to look at that a little bit differently going forward, or we'll never, or the university's gonna outrun the town. Because the town won't be growing at the same rate that the university has been. And that applies to all aspects of the town, our roads, our bridges, our infrastructure, our golf courses, our airports, our, whatever the case may be. And I'm, I'm afraid we've, we've kind of shocked people away. It shocked me. And in fact, I told you in the last meeting, had I not already paid for all the equipment that's going into this last year for tax purposes, I think I'd have probably just folded this up and maybe reconsidered it, or figured out a way to move it out of town. So I just, I would just suggest to the city and the city council, we've, we've got good people. I, I really appreciate working with Keith and Matt. They're, they're really trying to, to do the right things. We've just encumbered ourselves with some difficulties in this fee process, and we've got to relook at it because it would scare most people into a non, non-affirmative decision to come to town and be part of that. I take your questions, I take your, anything you'd want to throw at me.
Can I maybe just, well, I mean, this, two things. One, I'll, I have this letter from Scott that, you know, that kind of goes along with what you're saying. In fact, I'll just read it right now. It says, "Dear Mayor and City Council, unfortunately, I am able to be here tonight as I have a family event that I need to attend. I am writing this letter to let you know that the Department of Economic Development recognizes the need for and the benefit of impact fees to the community. However, we also recognize the potential for these fees to be a significant challenge to growth, particularly for businesses. While no one has pointed to these fees specifically as a reason not to come, there are those who are considering coming that have raised them as a concern, especially entering a smaller market like Rexburg. It is true that others have paid them, but none without hesitation and questioning. We are not asking to eliminate impact fees, but rather express our desire to frequently review these fees and being open to discussions on other creative possibilities." And I think that's a lot of what you're asking for. And I would point out, kind of on both sides of the issue, that, yeah, it, it is something that, that is sometimes kind of difficult for us as we work with different businesses, and unfortunately, the car wash businesses are pretty much the highest end of the impact fees that we have, just because of all of the water and sewer usage. But, but I would also point out that, and I don't mean to be argumentative, but I just read in the newspaper that Ammon is having to do a bond for street reconstruction and stuff because they don't have enough money to, to be able to keep up with the street work that they need to do. So they're having to ask their citizens to pass a bond to pay for that. And so that's what our impact fees are for, is so that we don't have to do that. Now, is there a way that we can be more creative and be able to structure them in a way that is more affordable and things like that? Yes, and we've actually talked about those. Unfortunately, you know, the timing of all these car washes coming all at once, we didn't, we didn't see three new car washes coming to town this year, and so we, we hadn't really been able to, to, to do, you know, that work yet, and so, so it, it was what it was when you came in. But, but that's, I don't know if any of you other, have any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I, I agree. I mean, if, if we're that far out, you know, from 300-plus thousand dollars to $80,000, you know, from three hundred-plus thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars, if we're that far out, well, something's wrong. I mean, that, that can't be right, for a city like Twin Falls and then Rexburg. I, I understand Rexburg is smaller, and we're not, you know, they have a larger tax base and those kinds of things. But, but I wonder if there isn't a creative way that we can maybe, maybe make that more as a pay-as-you-go kind of a thing, rather than an upfront kind of a fee? Which I think the upfront fees are what, what would really deter someone from, from coming.
Yeah.
If, if we could make it more of an at-pay-as-you-go kind of a fee.
That's one of the options we've talked about.
I think that would, so anyway, I'd be interested in being involved in some of those discussions if, when we get to that point.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, you've got to look at, you've got to look at both sides of the equation, you know? We, we want to try to be, as, we, we don't want to be an obstacle for growth and for businesses to be able to come, but, but, but on the other hand, we don't want to be, you know, taxing our citizens extra to have to pay for something that is being used by those businesses. And so there's, there's always that, you know, as we talked about before, there's always that balance of things that we have to consider. And so, any other questions?
Now, if you make that decision, and you, you charge me those big fees, don't raise my water and sewer rates. Just, can your grandfather?
That's, that's one thing, that's one thing that we need to, you know, you know, we talk about the, what Twin Falls' impact fee was, but I don't know, I don't know what their water and sewer fee is, if their fees are higher than ours, you know, or, or what. But those are, those are probably some of the things to do, a kind of a broad study, to figure out how we can spread that cost out and make it more affordable, that's, that would all be part of it.
I had a list of fifteen cities in Idaho that were of our demographic or larger, and had their rates. And you've got that, Keith's had it, I've, I think, I may even given you, Keith, a copy of that, but it's available online, you can, you can find it, people have already done the.
Yeah.
Statistics on that. I think, I think it behooves us to probably realize, you know, that a city gets, I know where the school district got all their money, I don't know where the city gets all of theirs. I got an idea, but there's some grants.
We actually.
There, there are, there are federal and state grants that come our way, they help pay for water systems and sewer systems. We bonded back in 2010 to upgrade our city sewer facility, I think it was a ten-million-dollar bond.
That was the water, wasn't it, water bond that we did?
Was it sewer?
I'm thinking that was. Oh, okay.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-ten was a ten-million-dollar bond, by the time we were done doing the build-out of like eighteen million all in.
Yeah.
And then the water, we ended up spending low teens, and then our loan for that was after principal payments, something like that.
Yeah, and we, and we've, we've tried to be as frugal on those as we can. We took advantage of a DEQ loan that was 1.75% interest, and they forgave us two million dollars of it on that water bond. So that, that's helpful, but, you know, it's, when we're growing like we are, it's, it's tough to keep up.
Those revenue bonds, you know, they're paid off with the fees that you charge for water and sewer, and then I imagine impact fees probably go against those revenue bonds as well.
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know how, how that's structured. I could probably say that, but any other questions that you have? I just encourage us to be proactive, let's be business-friendly, because it's ultimately, it's business that carries the burden of paying most of the taxes in a community, and then, and then also affords the growth opportunities and the jobs and the kind of things, you know? It's, it's where the cheerleaders come to get their donations.
That's exactly right.
It's everything else, it's soup to nuts, it's five a day for me, but, you know, whatever. It's, it's a good community, it's been a great community for us to do business. And our, and our cost of living here is pretty reasonable compared to a lot of places. But the, the, the impact fees and the, the building fees were, in the words of.
A lot.
Don in Twin Falls, "Oh my gosh." He's a cattle farmer, he didn't use gosh. He's a, he's a, he's a dairyman down there that has that operation, but he, he, you know, and, and anybody that I've ever talked to, I, I mentioned that I, I talked to Tommy's Express, who, who've overseen, you know, a couple hundred of these operations, and they said, they've only seen one of their place, and it was up in Washington State that was even close.
Yeah.
To doing this, so it's.
Yeah, it's definitely high, and we get the same information from the Tag and Go, you know, their, their fee was even higher. But they said that they have other cities where they're at that, that are higher, but we're definitely in the high end of the different cities that they're in. So it is something that we need to take a look at and see if we can.
And not just for this business, but for any, you know, whether it might be somebody who builds components for aircraft, I don't know.
Yeah.
There, there's gonna be entrepreneurs that want to live here for the reasons I stated before. We just don't want to discourage that opportunity to have those kind of jobs and those kind of families and that kind of activity happen in our community. Thank you, and thanks for serving on the city council. It's a, it's a wonderful job, the pay is wonderful, I know you make a lot of money doing that.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Taylor, we appreciate that. All right, let's move on to item number A. Let's see, the, the, actually, that's a tabled item, and we have the public-private partnership contract for the community ice rink. Matt, are we ready to do that, or do we need to leave that tabled?
I sent it back to him with, with our edits last night, and I haven't heard back from him yet.
Okay. All right, yeah, we've been going back and forth in negotiations with Mr. Renneker, and I think it's going well. We just, there's always a lot of little details with insurance and a bunch of different things that we're trying to get ironed out. So we will bring that forward another time. All right. Item number B is our second reading items, these are items which, which, which have been second read. Those, this is which have been second read, so these would be, are these second readings or third readings? Oh, they've been first read, okay, this says have been second read, so I, that's, I think they should have said first read. Okay, sorry. All right, second readings, item number one, ordinance number 1110, the amendment to ordinance number 810, parade in public assembly to prohibit personal property placed in the public right-of-way until 6:00 PM the day prior to an event, and designate these areas of park facility reservations. Is there any further discussion or comments on these items, on this particular item? I know you talked about it while I was gone last time. Any comments or questions? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance 1310, second read.
Mayor, I'll make that motion. Mayor, I'll make that motion, the ordinance 1310, second read.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Seconded by council member Chambers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will consider ordinance 1310, second read. Ordinance number 1311 is to rezone 245 Rodney Drive from public facilities to low-density residential two, LDR two. Is there any discussion on that before we make a motion? Hearing none, I would consider a motion to consider ordinance 1311, second read.
Mr. Mayor, I still move that we make reconsider ordinance number 1311, second read.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by council member Reese. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion carries. And number three is ordinance number 1312 to rezone 1022 West Main Street from mixed-use to Community Business Center. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance 1312, second read.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by council member Colin Erickson. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, we will consider ordinance 1312, second read. We have no third readings to consider. Item number 11 is a consent calendar, which, which consists of the minutes from the April 3rd, 2024 meeting, and the approval of the city of Rexburg bills. Is there any questions about any of these items before we move forward on them? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar and pay the bills.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, we will move that, that motion passes, we will pay the bills. Is there anything else to be brought up before the council?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted, hey Keith, when are they gonna open up University?
Friday.
Friday?
Yeah, they're planning on tapping it, getting the, planning on paving it, tapping it, and then opening it up on Friday.
Okay.
And they do, in case you haven't been out that way, if you do, if you have been, you already know this, but 12th West was opened up yesterday as well, which is nice to get that back open, because it was a long ways around for some different folks. But that's open now and done. So, all right, we stand adjourned, thank you everyone for being here, appreciate that.